Okay, all right. We are called to order at 9:00 AM on the dot. First, we're going to start out with a moment of silence. I'd ask folks to keep George Taylor with NVHS, who passed away a couple days ago, in their mind as we observe this moment of silence. Commissioner Tabai?
Please join me. Pledge allegiance. Aye.
The pledge of allegiance is to the Aye of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, in combination, under oath, in wisdom, liberty, and justice for all.
May I have a motion as to the March 5, 2020, meaning minutes?
That's it, right?
We have a motion. I'll go ahead and second that motion from Commissioner Pritchett to approve the minutes. All in favor of approval for the March 5 minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. We're going to go through, e as in echo, the resolutions here. As a heads up, before we start that, though, as far as consent, just so that staff can get folks lined up while we're doing the resolutions, apart from F-17, are there any other consent items that we'll pull when we get to that section? Speak now or forever hold your peace? All right, perfect. So we'll go ahead and start with e as in echo, one. Commissioner Pritchett?
Thank you, sir. We are doing a resolution for the emergency management. Our -- oh, there's Chief. I didn't see you come around the side. How are you today?
Very good, thank you.
Thank you for what all you guys are doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Whereas emergency medical professionals and volunteers provide medical care to victims of sudden, life-threatening injuries and illnesses, often under stressful conditions and in high-risk situations to save lives, and whereas the 2020 National Emergency Medical Service Week theme EMS Strong, Ready Today, Preparing for Tomorrow reminds us that Brevard County's residents and guests benefit daily from the knowledge, skill, judgment of paramedics, emergency medical technicians, firefighters, dispatchers, educators, administrators, emergency physicians, emergency nurses, and others who encompass the emergency medical system. And whereas the emergency medical personnel must rapidly assess, manage, and effectively provide care in unpredictable situations requiring life and death judgments, and whereas Brevard County EMS teams unselfishly serve on the front line of health care when responding to the man-made and natural disasters at local, state, and national levels, and whereas a recognition is due for the emergency medical service system for its accomplishments and contributions to improve public welfare through health care, medical transportation, injury prevention, education, disaster response, homeland security, and other initiatives that reduce health care costs and save lives. Therefore, now it is my honor to go ahead and ask for a vote to approve this resolution for Emergency Medical Services Week. Mr. Chair, I make a motion.
We have a motion to adopt, the second from Commissioner Smith. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, passes unanimously. Chief, you got the floor, sir.
So you don't realize how long those resolutions are to standing up here waiting for you to finish it? So I want to thank Commissioner Pritchett for sponsoring the resolution for EMS Week 2020, the theme of which is EMS Strong, Ready Today, Preparing for Tomorrow. The theme this year seems appropriate as we have prepared and continue to prepare for the COVID-19 pandemic, and will continue to meet those challenges with not only your support, but the support of our community as well, who have been fantastic so far. As always, I want to take this a brief moment to thank our brave men and women out there in the trenches each and every day and performing those outstanding patient care and transporting the sick and injured, and those behind the scenes in our EMS bureau, keeping this big ship afloat and always moving forward. So thank you very much for recognizing us.
Thank you, sir. And Colonel Wallace, let's go ahead and give you a quick recognition as well, if you want to give folks away, if I know that you're involved with it as well.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I'm just thinking, probably on account of the COVID precautions, we may want to do the handing of the actual framed resolutions down the road. Otherwise, we're all going to have to lather in Purell, and I don't know that that's the prettiest thing to see in the morning. All right, so we'll go ahead to e two. Commissioner Nardi?
Can we do e three first? He's just headed up right now.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll go to e three. All right, that is me. Okay, so whereas Florida leads the U.S. with about 2 million registered and non-registered vessels with over 22 million boaters enjoying Florida's waterways each year, and whereas Florida leads the U.S. in the number of boating accidents and deaths with drowning being the leading cause of death, and whereas the National Safe Boating Council, U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary, Central Brevard Flotilla, and local and state agencies all support the Wear It Safe Boating Campaign to promote wearing life jackets while under way, and whereas several local organizations involved in helping educate the public emphasize getting a vessel safety check, wearing life jackets, and attending a classroom version of a boating safety class, and whereas those who have taken the boating -- pardon me, the classroom boating safety class given by the U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary and U.S. Power Squadron have less than a 1.9% boating fatality rate, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida does hereby support the goals of the National Safe Boating Council and proclaims May 16 through May 22, 2020, is National Safe Boating Week and urges all those who boat to wear their life jacket, learn more about safe boating practices, and act responsibly while on or near the water and take a safe boating class. May I have a motion to adopt?
Subway.
All right, let's give that to Commissioner Smith. So a motion from Commissioner Smith, I'll treat that as a second from Commissioner Pritchett. All in favor of adoption, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, passes unanimously. Welcome. Thank you all for coming out.
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioners. My name's Greg Hendricks. I'm the flotilla commander for the U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary Central Brevard Flotilla, 17-6. My vice commander, Farron Pettis, we really appreciate your support. I can tell you during these last few weeks, when we've all been sort of sequestered and things have been shut down, our waterways have been extremely busy. If you've been by Kelly Boat Ramp East, it's like a zoo on Fridays and Saturdays. I was talking to Wes Marine the other day, and he says, my gosh, for the last three weeks, it's been like a Friday, Saturday, every day of the week. So people are getting out, they're using the waterways, and we really appreciate the support of the Commission and Matt Culver from Boating Waterways, Natural Resources. Just they do a super job, and we appreciate being here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'll tell you as well, I actually thought about volunteering with you all, but there was a deal breaker for me. Your office is too close to Ryan's, and I didn't want to get any bigger than I already am.
We actually have now moved over to the Veterans Memorial Center.
Oh, that's right. That's right. I apologize.
So you can get a little exercise between Ryan's and there, so.
There we go. Now I don't have the excuse anymore. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
May I agree to?
You want to step?
Sure.
Yes, ma'am. We're here, go ahead.
Thank you for bringing the handsome one with you, Sheriff.
Exactly.
Does that mean?
Come on, Chief.
Let's go with that for now.
I brought a little bit of backup.
If this isn't intimidating, I don't know what is. All right, this is a resolution recognizing May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and May 11 through 17 is National Police Week. And we have a resolution, whereas members of Brevard County's law enforcement departments proudly protect and serve the citizens of Brevard County, and whereas working in law enforcement is one of the most dangerous and challenging professions in an ever-changing world today, and whereas by presidential proclamation and congressional resolution in 1962, May 15 has been designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the calendar week encompassing May 15 as National Police Week. And whereas since the inception of Police Week, law enforcement officials and supporters gather each May to honor and pay tribute to those who have fallen, and whereas Brevard County pays tribute to the 15 law enforcement officers fallen in the line of duty, their courageous efforts displayed an enormous amount of valor, commitment, and duty, and heroism, and whereas we pay tribute to the fallen law enforcement members of Brevard County. Lieutenant Roy D. Blake, Cocoa Police Department; Lieutenant Amos Cox, Brevard County Sheriff's Office; Officer Jack Henry Chanel, Titusville Police Department; Officer Jack Hankey, Kennedy Space Center; Officer Joseph Stephen Pellicano, Melbourne Police Department; Officer Ronald Midgley, Grogan, Palm Bay Police Department; Officer Gerald Douglas Johnson, Palm Bay Police Department; Deputy Robert Nicole Jr., Brevard County Sheriff's Office; Officer Stephen Franklin House, Titusville Police Department; Officer Charles B. Autry, Cocoa Beach Police Department; Officer Philip Jeffrey Flag, Satellite Beach Police Department; Sergeant Ernest Edward Hartman, Satellite Beach Police Department; Deputy Raymond E. Warner, Brevard County Sheriff's Office; Deputy Lucille Ross, Brevard County Sheriff's Office; Deputy Barbara A. Pill, Brevard County Sheriff's Office; Agent Kevin J. Stanton, Brevard County Sheriff's Office. And whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, D.C., whereas recognition and remembrance of our fallen officers are commemorated nationally each May 15. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby proclaim May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day and Police Week, May 11 through May 17, 2020, National Police Week, in Brevard County, as we salute the service of all law enforcement officers who protect our communities and safeguard our republic, done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 19th day of May, AD, 2020. And Chair, with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll go ahead and second that motion. So all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Junie, Doug, you want to come up?
Well, first of all, members of the Commission, thank you so much for not only today in this resolution, Commissioners Nardi, for making this happen, but also for all the support you give us throughout the year and quite frankly, throughout your time on the Commission. We are blessed to serve in Brevard County where our citizens and our government officials love us, and we are truly blessed. When you look at this past week in the National Police Memorial, you look at the names of the fallen on the wall, and you know that each one of them gave their lives in protection of their communities, regardless if they served here or they served elsewhere in this great country. And you know, unfortunately, this year, the police memorial that takes place in Washington, D.C. was unable to be held. The police memorial at the Police Hall of Fame was unable to be held because of the impact of COVID-19. But what has been very evident is that people's hearts have held these fallen heroes in their thoughts and prayers, and we are truly blessed for that. So thank you on behalf of not only our agency, but I think I speak for our brothers and sisters at the various police departments throughout Brevard County. Thank you for recognizing our fallen heroes and for standing so strongly with our law enforcement officers here in Brevard County. Chief?
No.
Melvin, anybody?
I just appreciate the opportunity to be here and the support that we get from our Black politicians.
Thank you all so much. Appreciate you coming out.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Smith, e four.
Thank you, sir. I assume this is on. Is this on? Yes. All right. Mary Ann Ferrera, where are you? Mary Ann is the representative from Rotary, and she's holding a miniature of Josh the Otter. Whereas drowning is the leading cause of death and lifelong disabilities to children under the age of five, and boating fatalities are mostly the result of boaters not wearing life jackets. And whereas with temperatures on the rise as we head out to enjoy summer activities, parents are reminded to always watch young children playing in or near any body of water and ensure that life jackets are available and worn when boating. Whereas Drowning Prevention Month was established through a collaborative effort across the country to promote water safety and drowning prevention along with Safe Boating Week, which has been identified by the United States Coast Guard, and it coincides with the same period. And whereas Josh the Otter Water Safety Awareness Projects were first conducted throughout Brevard County by Rotary Club members and are now done in over 40 states to promote water safety awareness. And whereas Swim Safe Forever educates our community about layers of protection necessary to prevent drowning and provides access to survival swim -- say that quick -- survival swim instruction through scholarships, and whereas the Florida Department of Health in Brevard County recognizes that drowning is 100% preventable and promotes public awareness through educational outreach, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby unanimously recognize the month of May 2020 as Water Safety and Drowning Prevention Month and urges all residents and visitors to recognize the vital importance of water safety and drowning prevention education, done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 19th day of May, 2020. Mr. Chair, I propose that we approve this.
I'll go ahead and second that. All in favor of adoption, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Welcome.
Well, on behalf of all of the Rotaries in Brevard County, the first one I have to thank is the Board of Education and my godfather, Jim Underwood, who the guys in the back, the guys and the gals in the back from the Coast Guard know very well. Secondly, I'm a paramedic by heart, a Jersey girl born and bred. I don't pump my own gas till I get to Florida. And I got adopted to Josh the Otter. I was an educator in schools for almost 50 years in downtown One Mile Square, Hoboken, New Jersey, home of the Oreo cookie and baseball and Frank Sinatra. But the most important thing is this little guy here. The big guy, we didn't want to put into the costume, so the little guy is here. And this little guy accompanies me when I go to schools where we can't get Josh, the big guy. So this is the little baby. We in Rotary in Viera adopted a new big guy. So my friend and I, thank you. We have taught in Brevard County to over 12,000 pre-K and kindergarten students with the Josh the Otter program. We also go to the summer programs where they have the swim clubs. But the big guy over here, Commissioner Smith, those of you who don't know, I'm going to tell a tale out of school. He has his own book, Josh Book, and he goes and he is a reader, volunteer reader in the school system. So on behalf of all of us, including Josh, we thank you for the recognition that you helped promote. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we're going to pull F-17. I believe that was it. I don't think there was anything else that anyone wanted pulled. So may I have a motion to pass Consent Less F-17?
Subway.
All right, motion from Commissioner Smith. I'll go ahead and second that on passing Consent Less F-17. All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, we've passed Consent Less F-17 unanimously. So F-17, Ian, welcome, sir.
Morning, Commissioners. So F-17, if you recall it, your last meeting on the 5th, we had talked about the 4.4 million or up to 4.4 million that had been set aside out of the CARES Act funding for a rent and mortgage assistance program, a utility and security deposit program, and a food stability program. At that time, I mentioned that we'd be updating the policy that we had used previously and bringing it back to you. So that is what you have in front of you as F-17.
Question for you.
Absolutely.
I'm going to go there, because I don't know that anyone else is. If we were to, how can I phrase this diplomatically, have someone in the country illegally, would it be possible that they would receive funding from us the way that we're currently structured?
I don't believe so. Obviously, you know, someone could potentially always try and defraud us. And then I'm hoping that because of the checks and balances that we have in our system, we'd catch that. But part of the documentation that we're looking at as backup for the program includes income tax returns, bank statements. There is in there a waiver, because we are going to be looking at social security numbers. So we are going to be looking for that information. So there's a waiver included as an attachment to the application, because we have to let people know that we need your social security numbers and what we do with that information.
I appreciate it. Any other questions for Ian?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Tabai?
Thank you. And this is more comment than question.
Yes, sir, please.
Are you ready for that? First of all, I want to thank you for the hard work and dedication you and your team have put into this, two weeks for a program that is more than $4 million, is the Omen's work, and I greatly appreciate that. So much so that I'm going to do something that I have never done in my political career. In fact, I despise politicians that have done this. And I'm going to do it a little backwards. Normally, what these folks do is they try to amend stuff, and then they get it amended, and then they vote against it. So I'm going to say on, before I go on, that under no circumstance will I be voting for it. These are just my suggestions to make it more palatable. So please understand that this doesn't meet my endorsement, even with these additions. The U.S. House just passed a $3 trillion assistance package on top of what was already appropriated. Yes, it has to go through the U.S. Senate, and yes, it will need the President's signature, but I think it's probably premature to move forward. The second round has additional $1,200 stimulus checks, $200 billion in hazard pay. I had to take a second and actually write down what a trillion was and what 200 billion is, so please keep that in mind. If we pass this without stringent requirements, we would be no better than the federal government, which is literally spending our grandkids' money. We are doing just that. So that's number one. Number two, existing assistance, the rent and mortgage assistance programs, procedures as written do not have provisions for clawback. In other words, if we hand out this money, this $4.4 million, and the federal government passes this additional $3 trillion or even $2 trillion expenditure, we have no way to get this money back. Again, Commissioner Loeb has pointed out, these individuals have most likely already received $1,200 stimulus checks, 500 per child, 600 a week in federal unemployment through July 1st, even if they are an independent contractor. It's done retroactively. The state is a little behind, but they said they'll handle it retroactively, 275. In fact, there's many media reports that people are receiving more money unemployed than what they were employed. It is also unclear in this program whether we would have grant assistance in those situations where the government has halted evictions. Remember, the governor has extended the eviction period, so there are many things already in place. Mr. or Commissioner Loeb mentioned people that were here illegally. It's good that that would be caught, but I would take the tact that, and I spoke with you before, that this money will be going to non-U.S. citizens. Those citizens from other countries should generally be looking to their own nations for assistance during this global crisis. While we're talking about 4.4 million, we have no idea what the actual cost of administering these funds would be either. It could be twice that or even 10 times. We have no idea what the need is. Additionally, this program would allow those with felony records to be eligible for these funds. I do not believe that we should be handing out tax dollars to child molesters or people that abuse their spouses. So yes, it's great that it will not be going to people that are here illegally, but you could, and this is not unprecedented, the state of Florida has something called a clean hands provision in which they forbid certain privileges for people that have had felonies. So understand, if we go forward with this $4.4 million, quite possibly non-American citizens, and quite possibly people that have committed felonies will be eligible for these funds. You know, I don't know whether or not we need a, you know, a motion. I don't think there's the consent from the board, but I certainly would like these $4.4 million that we've allocated for rent and mortgage assistance to be put back into unallocated funds. I have no problem with the food assistance that is a help to individuals that are lacking food, but I think that any time that we hand out direct benefits for rent or mortgage, no matter how well it is done, and let me say again, you've done a great job, I just don't think that it's the wise, I don't think it's the proper thing, and I quite frankly don't think it's the conservative thing. Quite often, when we run, we say we are not going to be like Washington and hand out our grandkids' money. By doing this, this is exactly what we are lambasting over and over and over Washington for doing. So please keep that in mind, but please don't let that reflect the hard work that you and your office have done. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner, how do you really feel?
Mr. Golden did a wonderful job, so that's how I really feel on this.
Perfect. And I know we do have some folks in public comment. I'm happy to hear from the Commissioners before, hear the public comment, however you all want to do it. Do you want to hear the public comment first, or?
I mean, we could all probably talk about what we disagree with that Commissioner Tabai just said. I mean, we could argue about it for a while. I mean, if we have this many people willing to speak, I'll just say that, you know, obviously, I mean, that you're assuming, if we're talking convicted felons, you're assuming the absolute worst and egregious of crimes and that there's zero chance of rehabilitation. So I adamantly disagree with that. I think this money, whether we like it or not, I mean, the federal government clearly hasn't done their job in multiple areas, not just balancing the budget, but with our broken and disgusting immigration system. That's a whole other argument. That's not our fault as a local government. We receive these funds to help people, we receive these funds to help businesses employ these same people, and because there is a stay on evictions doesn't mean that that rent still isn't due. So I'm going to obviously be opposed to some of those comments, and I guess we'll just wait to hear from the public and see what they have to say. But I like the fact that you have strict guidelines, because then it makes sure the people that actually need it are the ones that get it, and it has a very small chance of abuse. I mean, there's abuse in everything in government, but we have a pretty, I like the direct payments. You know, I've actually gotten people complaining that they don't want to give out their private information, but if you're needing help, it only makes sense that that help go directly to where that need is. So I think it's great. I think you did a fine job with the policy, and obviously, we're not going to be handing out money like a free-for-all without those guidelines in place and without vetting. So I guess we'll.
I agree with that. And you know what the feds did is they've got this money, and they're actually trying to use us as a funnel to get it into our communities. And you know, as far as the stimulus, they already did that with all the families. We're already going to have problems with the economy anyways, because I think we're going to hit a recession. Well, we'll see. We'll see what Trump pulls off. You know, he seems to have good business savvy. But there is always people they're going to abuse, but for the majority of them that are genuinely in a situation, and you know what, you're doing the analysis and making sure that they're not getting a ton of funds and doing this. You already told us that last meeting. But I think this is substantial. I think we do have a lot of problems. There was over almost 50%. Commissioner Tabai, I know you know this number, on the people being able to receive funding that are out of work. You had that last time. You did it so wonderfully. But there's a big hunk of people here that aren't able to get those funds right now for unemployment. And whether, you know, what's going on, I know people that work at churches don't qualify for unemployment, so if the churches have closed down, you've got just groups of people that have no income or they're trying to figure it out. So I know you're spending up to this amount, but you already told us you're doing all the criteria, so I don't imagine you're going to spend this much money. So I feel pretty good about what we put in place, and I do also trust our community of trying very hard to be responsible with this, and I do trust you and our staff, too. So thank you.
I have a quick question.
Well, I agree with much of what you said. And in fact, when I first heard about this $105 million, I thought, boy, you know, maybe we shouldn't even give this money out, because this is, as you said, one more step where we're just spending our grandkids' money. And it's a government program, and we all know how wasteful government programs can be. But you know, the more I thought about it, the more I thought that government is the cause of this problem. Government has overstepped their bounds and stepped on the constitutional rights of everybody in this country. And because of that, businesses are going out of business, businesses have had to shut down. All their employees have been forced not to be able to work and make an income. And so government's caused this, so why not help government, help the people? so government's caused this, so why not help government, help the people that they've hurt? And of course, there's going to be some monies that fall through the cracks, but I think the way, at least our county has looked at it, and you're going to give money to the institutions rather than the people. So the people can't get the money and go out and buy a jet ski or a bottle of whiskey, it's going to go for their mortgages and their rents and et cetera. So I think this is about as good as it gets when it comes to a government program helping people, and I think it's definitely needed. And again, through no fault of their own, these people are out there suffering, so I think it's a good idea, especially when I got people like Commissioner Isnardi and my fellow commissioner to my right here overseeing and watching over it, I think we're in good hands, so if they're for it, I'm for it.
Question. What kind of demand have we seen? I mean, are we keeping a tally on the amount of people, and what, what is the, what is the request for right now?
So what's, what's we've been doing up until this point is, I didn't want to advertise the program until I brought this back to the board today. So what we've done is everyone who spoke at last, the last board meeting, who indicated that they had a need, plus all the emails, it's been about 25 people that we've reached out to to get some initial idea of what we're looking at, and so the estimate for those 25 is probably about $88,000 to $100,000. The majority of them do have a tie to coronavirus, but we will know the exact amount once we get them the application, and we can look through the backup documentation that they have, because we will take into account what they've received from other sources. You know, the policy speaks to the fact that there are going to be other forms potentially. I already know one of the other forms that we're developing is a request for lease of information form, and we've already started having conversations with the other agencies in the community that are receiving funds.
And it's not unlike any other government agency, when someone's requesting some assistance, correct, when they ask for that information, like license, social security number, that sort of thing?
Correct.
And what are we doing to protect their information, their private information?
The information is protected by, you know, even at Sunshine, there are certain aspects of the data that they give us that are not released even under a public records request, such as their social security number, those type of things.
Are we storing it, and are we?
We do. We do, we store it, we store it for the amount of time that's required by state statute. Every records request that we get that requests this type of information is always vetted through the county attorney's office, and then we redact out any information that is not eligible for release.
Okay, and I don't know, we haven't had something exactly like this, but what, what, what kind of experience do you, have, based on your experience, what do you foresee us getting flooded with? I mean, do you, do you believe that that 4.4 million is going to meet the immediate needs for what we're designing it for?
I'm hesitant. My gut feeling is it's not going to be enough, but I'm not going to come back to the board at this point without having expended any funds. My expectation at this point is that I'd probably have a better idea in July, when you come back to relook at that small business program, to give you an idea what the burden rate is as we go through these dollars. The 4.4 with the three different programs, the food safety stability program could be significant, because the school board is about to come to the end of the year, and they usually ramp down their feeding program to just summer camps. There are, so we have the potential for a increase over the summer months in need under that program. I will have more data regarding that by July also. There's also a difference in how we look at when the cares, these cares dollars take over from what FEMA has been doing up until this point. With FEMA, as long as there's a state of emergency, everybody who needs food can come get food. With the CARES Act, there's a requirement that we actually have a tie to coronavirus. So whatever we end up doing for the food stability program moving forward, we're going to have to somehow build that into the process, that we're, we're certifying that there's some kind of tie. So that's going to be an interesting process also as we, we move forward with that. So there are all these different factors. I will tell you that Hillsborough County gets upwards of 100-plus calls a day for their program. Polk County, I think it's partially because of the way they designed their program, they didn't have a lot of those guidelines in place that we do. They had 40,000 people sign up in about 24 hours for their assistance. We are looking at multiple avenues for people to be able to access and, and provide the applications. We'll put the application on the website, so people will be able to download it, fill it out, they can mail it in. I've talked to the libraries, we're going to have paper copies at the libraries, we're also going to use the libraries as a drop point, and then I will send staff once a day to go and pick up any applications there. We're also looking at online application software, so people will be able to fill out the application entirely online, including uploading documents and digitally signing, and then hopefully be able to then use that same program to do it off a mobile phone.
And so you foresee, even if the demand is high, you foresee that the 4.4 will get us through to July at least?
I believe so.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. I'm sure we'll have more questions and just take some notes with some of the speakers, if you could.
I will.
Thanks.
I'll throw out there, just because I think I'm the last one to chime in on this, out of respect for folks' time, I'll keep it really short. Essentially, the concerns that I have with respect to this that haven't already been articulated by Commissioner Tabia, I've already discussed the last time we were here, so I would just incorporate those same concerns again by referencing them. It's, it's not that I have any question as to the capability of Ian or Ian's staff. I've got to tell you, if anything, having Ian and his staff working on this makes me more comfortable than I otherwise would be, so I, I've just got some concerns that I don't know were surmountable, just as Commissioner Tabia's concerns, I don't know if they're surmountable. Beyond that, the only thing I would add to what I've said in the past is, in looking at the remaining money that we have that's potentially still available, if there is a proposal where we have the option of loaning the money instead of granting it outright, I would certainly view that a lot more favorably. So it's just something to keep in mind, I'm not pushing or twisting arms at this point, because obviously it depends on where things go with respect to the, the policy and the program that's currently in place, but down the road, when things come back, I would not mind looking at loans, whether it be to small businesses or otherwise, as opposed to simply handing it out and never having an expectation of, of getting it back. I think we can potentially do more with that money over the time that we have it available, if we were to loan it out, so that, assuming we get some portion of it back, we can turn around and then reloan that same amount again. But with that, let's go ahead, and we'll, we'll start with public comment on this. Welcome, and if you'd start with just your name and the city you reside in, please.
Hi, I'm Pam Derschka, a resident of Titusville. I'm here to advocate that the 40 million in CARES Act funding not yet allocated be used to provide direct economic support to local families and small businesses beyond the 4 million you're talking about. I've been affected by COVID-19, we all have, like many of you. Normally, on the dais here, I've been used to go into many events and activities, but the biggest effect for me has been the exposure to many in the community that have critical needs. They need groceries, and some need a place to live. Prior to the last county commission meeting, I emailed you a letter with pictures of just a few that I had met. I implored you to set aside funds for families like them. It included a father of a six-month-old living in a motel. It also included a little six-year-old living in a motel with his mother and grandmother. I've been part of the grocery delivery team that has taken groceries to these families and others in the community who lack transportation and funds. The mutual aid Brevard has been there for these families by matching up donations with needs. I've read the proposal for the Housing and Human Services Coronavirus Assistance Program. While it is a good effort and will likely help many in Brevard, it should be expand, and should be expanded, I sincerely doubt it will help a few, if any, of the people I've met the last two months. First of all, filling out a paper document and requiring copies like tax returns, bank statements, pay stubs would be an obstacle for them. They won't have a printer, and most won't have transportation even to get to the library that has been suggested. By the time they're able to put an application together, the funds may well be gone. Second, some of these families were in tough shape before COVID-19. COVID-19 made it harder for them to search for jobs, but this will not be reflected in the requirement to show 25% loss of income. 25% of zero is still zero. Third, consider the families who live in a hotel because they've not been able to provide first month and last month rent or other expenses of permanent housing. Will they be eligible for funds under this program? I'm not sure. They've been stuck in limbo during the current crisis and need help more than most. I know there are no easy answers, but I don't see a solution in this document. Here are some suggestions. The families in situations I've discussed should be able to apply, to call to apply as an option, and I heard that mentioned that they might be able to do it with their phone, and that would really be helpful. Number two, they need a social worker to help them through the process, and a social worker that can go to their applicant's location. Three, they need a portion of the funds set aside so it's not gone before they're able to apply, and-
Ma'am, I apologize, but I've got to touch you off. I'll let folks finish their sentence when they run out of time, but given the number of speakers we have today, I think we're north of two dozen at this point, so I apologize, but I thank you for coming out.
The funds need to be disturbed.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate that, ma'am. Thank you.
Good morning. Jim Kennedy, I live on Merritt Island. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank you for bringing me to speak today. Thank you for taking the first steps to distribute the federal CARES Act funds to help residents of our county. The 4.4 million is a good first step and a good way to ensure that your second step of the remaining funds are allocated effectively. We have seen that the process suggested for this first step, though still in its preliminary phase, would not be a good model for a much larger rollout that is to come. The need for the paper-based application will be shown to be an obstacle for lower-income applicants, who sometimes have to rely on libraries, which some are currently closed, to get to computing resources needed to print. This testing phase of spending will also show us that people in most need are not the ones who receive the most assistance. The present plan provides more income assistance to those with higher incomes instead of higher need. The CARES Act was intended for the most vulnerable in our society, not necessarily the ones that are the best at filing forms. I'm sure that in the full rollout of the funds provided by the county from the federal government for the express purpose, and I'm quoting, "fast and direct economic assistance for American workers and families and small businesses." You will ensure that families that were already on the fringe of economic disaster, medical need, housing hardships, and the foundation of our working class are the ones, excuse me, who can more easily and more directly access these funds as the federal government intended. Again, thank you for your time, and thank you for this trial rollout of funding to see where your plan is more sorely lacking in forethought and planning and achieving the required goals as set forth by the 116th Congress and President Trump. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Samantha Nazario. I'm a frequent attendee of these meetings.
Did you state the city you reside in, ma'am?
Melbourne.
Thank you so much.
I'm actually a constituent of Commissioner Isnardi, which is doing an amazing job along with Commissioner Prishett and Kurt Smith. I'm here on behalf of allocating more funds towards helping our families in need. In the UGALI corridor alone, we have served over 1.2 million meals with the assistance of Matt Susan from the school district board. We have 1,200 homeless children in UGALI alone. These families need these monies now, they need to be able to have access to these applications, and they can't wait till July, okay? They are in a desperate need, they are living in circumstances where, excuse me, a stimulus check may not have, may not exist for them, a food stamp card may not exist for them, and also, as to, as to Mr. Tabia's comment, these families work hard. These families are the ones that clean your toilets, clean your dishes in your restaurant, raise your children, and they work extremely hard. Just because we can't afford to live like everyone else doesn't mean we're not entitled to human basic rights. We, this is not a moment, this is a movement, and it gives you guys the chance to rise up and show your constituents, even if it's not your district, that you truly care about them. Restaurants like Rowley's in Brevard County, 30 years, closed, he can't open again. You have millennials living with their families being told it's safe to go back to work, even though our counting numbers are rising by 10 to 15 a day. This is devastating, disappointing, and very sad, and alone? People can't even pay their bills, and you want them to borrow more money? Like, this is ridiculous. Where's your compassion? Sympathy is one thing, empathy is another. I came from nothing. I came from the South Bronx. I came from New York in 2003, making six figures, to have to work four jobs in Brevard County to maintain my home. Lost my house in 2008, and your county didn't have funds to help me keep my house. So right now, we need to help the people in need. I agree with the gentleman before me, this is not about helping rich people keep their nice houses. This is about keeping the poor in a home. It's cheaper to get homeless people into a house than to continue to maintain them in the street. We've collected over 6,000 pounds, $6,000, just by people wanting to help other people in this district, and the fact that our commissioners sit up there and judge whether you're an immigrant, or, oh, you should have this money in the bank, and you should have got this, and you should have got that, really? Do you know what Brevard County pays? Do you know what the median rent in Brevard County? A one-bedroom is $1,100 when you make $8 an hour? Do the math. It's math, not magic. And it's absolutely devastating that this is how you are treating your constituents, the people that vote for you. Excuse me that some of you, unlike the three that voted for this, don't have constituents that suffer from financial hardships, but those three do. They're getting phone calls, especially Mrs. Isnardi and Kurt Smith. People are hungry, they are scared, they can't go back to work. Millennials live with parents that are over the designated age of illness. You're telling them, go back to work and kill your parents.
Thank you for coming out to speak, ma'am, I appreciate it.
Oh, my pleasure.
Welcome.
Hello, my name is Margarita Chavez, I live in West Melbourne. I'm here to talk about all the families that we address out there day in and day out. I'm one of those volunteers as a translator for the Hispanic community. I was out there during Hurricane Maria, when we had a lot of them that needed help with the FEMA and all of them. I'm still out there on the street helping, even now with this devastation. There are a lot of families. The Coronavirus Mutual Aid Foundation that's here is being helped by the total community, not by any outside resources. We do have a lot of people digging in their own pockets to help one another, because a lot of the agencies are closed, and that's a good thing, that people can step up to the plate and help one another. As you heard earlier, some of these people were talking about people in hotels. Well, we have people in the woods being pulled out to help and put into hotels, because it's been raising, and we have kids out there, we have people living in cars that need diapers and et cetera. Money like this needs to be allocated. Now, during this meeting, we didn't hear what was going to be happening with the food. What is going to be happening with that? Commissioners didn't say anything. How is the money for that going to be spared out of this 44, you know, monies that you guys have there? Can someone answer that question? We need some of that money going to some of these non-for-profits out there helping one another, because the community has been stepping up to the plate. As Mrs. Nazario said, you know, there are people that are struggling. The everyday people who are making it are not making it anymore, so we need you guys to step up to the plate. Today, I haven't seen too many of you girls be in the front page of the newspaper with stepping up to say, to help the community. I'd like to see that. I'm an individual just out here trying to help. I'm not asking to be in the front page, I'm a person who's in the background, not wanting the attention. There are so many heroes out here that don't ask for that, but we're asking for you guys. Yes, the government failed us. Try and step up to the plate and make it better here in Brevard County. Let's show them what we can do here, because you know what? The little people out here that are out here, they're probably the ones sticking their monies, and they're taking the money out of their pocket and putting it in that bin to say, let's help ourselves here in Brevard County. Please, commissioners, please, everyone, help. We need this for us. We got new people coming in to be part of the new agenda for, in our county, I'm hoping that they all hear what we're going through, because they will make a difference. Voting's coming up, we're going to make this happen. I thank you for your time, please make it happen. Thank you, Ian Goan, for what you're trying to do, make it happen for these people.
Thank you, ma'am.
Try and step up to the plate and make it better here in Brevard County. Let's show them what we can do here, because you know what? The little people out here that are out here, they're probably the ones sticking their monies and taking the money out of their pocket and putting it in that bin to say, let's help ourselves here in Brevard County. Please, commissioners, please, everyone, help. We need this for us. We got new people coming in to be part of the new agenda for, in our county, I'm hoping that they all hear what we're going through, because they will make a difference. Voting's coming up. We're going to make this happen. I thank you for your time. Please make it happen. Thank you, Ian Goan, for what you're trying to do. Make it happen for these people.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, good morning. My name is Tara Pagliarini. I'm the Executive Director of Family Promise of Brevard, and I reside in Rockledge. First, I want to thank you for committing funds toward housing and food assistance for Brevard County residents to help families stabilize. We have long known that 40% of our community was just one paycheck away from losing everything in the wake of a major life event. Unfortunately, this is the event, and what we are seeing in the field as a frontline responder is astonishing. For the past seven years, Family Promise of Brevard has provided housing stability for over 2,000 Brevard County residents. During that time, we have become a well-respected leader in providing housing assistance to families with children. It is in that light that I came here today to share three main takeaways after reading the policy that I've also shared with Ian. The first is around collaboration. Thankfully, there are a handful of entities providing homeless prevention or housing assistance to our residents facing a housing crisis due to a loss of income during COVID. The problem comes in that most of these funding sources are operating in silos without communicating with one another, and the fear comes that without a cohesive assistance process for our community, we are encouraging agency shopping, which will not result in the outcomes we are looking for in our county. It is integral that we bring our funding entities together to discuss funding eligibility and income sources, developing an efficient model that is equitable for everyone. The second is around maximizing resources. A direct result of collaboration will be that we're able to maximize and leverage our resources to serve as many residents as possible. If that's going to take place, the application must provide a place for an applicant to elaborate on the first question. Currently, there is no space for it. The question is, have you received funding or received a commitment for funding from any other source? If a household's need exceeds their eligibility for the county's funding, other funding sources can potentially partner to make up the difference, but it will not happen if we aren't communicating with each other. If a household does not meet your eligibility, they may qualify for private funding through other entities like Family Promise of Brevard, but it won't happen if we're not communicating with each other. Additionally, our housing assistance comes with short-term case management focused on landlord mitigation. Our agency, along with other BHC providers, can work together with the county to maximize funds by negotiating balances with landlords and having late fees waived, advocating to keep them housed. The third and last point is around data transparency. All of the housing assistance funds we have dispersed to families over the past three years have been entered into our shared community database with the Brevard Homeless Coalition called HMIS, the Homeless Management Information System. With that system, we can pull up any family that has received services and understand more fully their level of need and current housing interventions.
Thank you so much, ma'am. I appreciate you coming out.
Thanks. Don't want to duplicate services.
Welcome, sir.
Hello, my name is Pastor Joel Thule. I pastor the First Church of the Nazarene in Melbourne. I'm a resident of West Melbourne. Imagine with me a 17-year-old boy who is raised in Brevard County, attended elementary school, middle school, Melbourne High School, hopefully graduating in June now, recently just graduated from Eastern Florida State College. Imagine this 17-year-old who receives no public assistance as an unaccompanied minor, is not claimed on the taxes of his parents. This 17-year-old boy, ready to become a student at East, sorry, University of Central Florida, UCF, ready to launch into his dream of studying political science so that one day he might sit in your chair, representing the needs of the people of this county that has raised him. Imagine this 17-year-old boy having the dream of, when he turns 18, moving out of the home that has cared for him as an unaccompanied minor, hoping to step into this county as a tax-paying, hard-working citizen. The 17-year-old boy, who since the age of 16, has generated his own income by working here locally in a store, working endlessly, paying his own taxes, shopping, contributing, purchasing his own school supplies. This 17-year-old boy in the midst of COVID-19, wondering how on earth he would ever be able to afford housing, let alone food and car insurance, and all of the other things that would help him become a meaningful citizen in Brevard County. He's not an undocumented immigrant. Thankfully, we have a community that supports our undocumented neighbors well, even though that they are facing the crisis more tremendously than most. He is not a pedophile. He is not a spouse abuser. He's a product of elementary schools, middle schools, high schools, and Eastern Florida State College. He is an excellent, brilliant young man who's striving to make a difference in his community, and he's wondering where he will be able to take his next step in this county. I ask that you would think of those individuals as our high schools get ready to graduate thousands of 18-year-olds who are ready to step into Brevard County as emerging leaders, and pray today that we would do what is best for those who are most vulnerable in this community.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning.
Welcome, Doctor.
Hi, how are you?
Good to see you.
I'm Marion Moore with the Brevard Homeless Coalition. I'm the Executive Director there, and I want to thank you.
Could you get a little closer to the mic? I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Thanks.
I'd like to thank you first off for the approval of the initial funding to help our community and for allowing me to speak today. The Cares Act funding provides Brevard County a unique opportunity to meet many needs in our community, the needs that have arisen as a result of or been directly influenced by COVID-19. The Brevard Homeless Coalition's goal is to prevent and eliminate homelessness in Brevard. Current best estimates are projecting an increase in homelessness by 40% to 45% by the end of 2020. We've had a 15% increase in homelessness in Brevard County over the past year. These numbers were recorded in January, long before we began feeling the impact of COVID-19 locally. We cannot afford another 40% to 45% increase. It is imperative that we take all measures necessary to ensure Cares Act funding allocated for homeless prevention services be distributed as quickly as possible in order to lessen the impact of this crisis on our citizens. We strongly support the implementation of a policy that will assist many individuals and families and prevent homelessness throughout Brevard. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Moore.
Hi, good morning. I'm Lloyd Dabs from Viera. I did have a speech that I wrote this morning, but I'm kind of throwing it out. I just want to thank the Commission for allowing me to speak and also for allocating the $4.4 million for mortgage and food assistance. I think it's important. I just want to speak very briefly on the fact that we have both a moral obligation and an economic obligation to solve this problem. The $4.4 million will not be enough. We can see the writing on the walls in terms of how we allocate that money. I know there's a lot of people hurting, but we also need to take a look at the next steps for what I call flattening the economic curve. We've done the health part, and Brevard County's been great, but the economic aspects are going to be severe, so we have to very significantly look at the remaining $40 million that we have to spend. All to say, from a moral standpoint, we have an obligation to assist the people of Brevard. I've been to the homeless camps. I've been feeding the hungry children of Brevard. I've seen the exponential increase in volume of need that we've had in Brevard County, and it's almost insurmountable, and $4.4 million is a good start. There will have to be significant measures for the remaining $40 million that focuses on small business loans and innovation and making sure that we can keep our people employed, but also focuses on the nearly 12,000 people that have been impacted due to COVID-19. This money is not just a handout. This is about how to ensure that we stabilize our economy, which will see unemployment increases up to 14%. We know that. What that means is less tax revenue and less revenue at the county and state level. So we have to have a multi-pronged strategy that focuses on who we are as a people from our morality standpoint, but also economically, how do we tackle this? So we have to have strong, robust measures here in Brevard County that ensures our service industry and our workers are taken care of, small businesses are taken care of, and those that are unemployed have jobs or assistance moving forward. That's the bottom line. Not only makes moral sense, it makes good economic sense. So I would urge the Commission to strongly consider their next steps very wisely, because any wrong decision in terms of how we approach the economic aspect could cripple the Space Coast economy for the next 10 to 15 years. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And just as a heads up while the next speaker is getting brought down for staff, I'm intending to take Jay's and Juliet one after we finish this item, so we'll do Jay's and Juliet one, then we'll go to G's and Golf, H's and Hotel, and then pick up at Jay's and Juliet two. Welcome, sir.
Thank you very much for having me here. My name is George Sanders. I live in Brevard County, the city of Titusville, and my main concern now is the allocation of funds that you commissioners are talking about and how it's being distributed to the elderly. I find myself in that position as an elderly person, and my housing is not that great. Since this coronavirus has encampment our society, we all changed. There's a lot of fear that has been going on, and I just want to know from the commissioners that what's being done for the senior citizens? I mean, we are suffering, and as myself as a senior citizen, I may not look like one, but I am a senior citizen, thank you very much, but I'd like to know what's being done for my age group. We try to pay our bills. We try to get support, and there is none. They talk about allocation. I don't see any allocation, but I see a lot of bottleneck that's being presented through the commissions. I don't think that's appropriate if we're going to have a meaningful society and we're going to have some growth in Brevard County and in the state of Florida. Now, what I do see is that the senior citizens are being left out in this allocation, being the fact of poor housing, the housing is not there. There seem to be no commission that's concerned about my senior, about me and other senior citizens, and I am concerned. And this question I'm asking to the commissioners, what decisions have you made for the senior citizens in this epidemic? We are having financial difficulties. We're having medical problems. When we go to our medical doctors, they don't even want to touch us. They don't even want to see us. They want to look at us six feet away, and what kind of medical attention is that? Tell me, how am I going to get any better walking up a flight of stairs, and I have a back problem, I have other problems, I have other ailments? Where is my relief? Who's taking, who's concerned about me? And other senior citizens like me, they may not be here speaking today, but let me stand here, if I may, talk for them too. We need help. We need some kind of concern for housing. We need some kind of concern for proper, proper finance, because all our financial structure has been destroyed, as you do know. Our way of life has changed. We are scared in this society. We are very scared, and you know and I know, how are we going to have economic growth if we have so much fear? Where's all this fear coming from? We don't really have any kind of medical data that's backing, that we really know, but yet still we have all this fear. We have all this news that comes up. This person died, this, you know, 60,000 died here, $70,000, $70,000 died this time, this, you know. All these numbers being thrown at us, and it's giving us what back? We get fear back. We don't need fear. We need answers. We need solutions. We need protocols that's going to get this society back together again as a cohesiveness for everyone. Can we get some help?
Sir, I appreciate you coming out. Thank you so much.
Good morning. It's me again, Namor Thomas from Titusville. Okay, this bill, it doesn't help me at all. I fall through the cracks. Number one is I don't have the library to go to. I cannot fill out a application. I need help to fill out the application, number two. As a disabled person in Titusville, there is, I don't know how I'm going to get the application. Who's going to help us? How am I going to bring it all the way here without any transportation? So try, I mean, where do we fall? Where does that loophole fall for us as disabled? Where do we fall in this crack of getting some assistance of this $44 million? We need help too. You know, our money, our little fixed income, what we have, we paid transportation links. Like I told you, I have proof of my links to go to the hospital. I paid $80 one-way for a trip to find out I have pneumonia. I'm supposed to be quarantined. Well, I'm not quarantined, because I'm, you know, I'm standing up, and I'm trying to advocate for myself, you know, and my friends. I'm trying to advocate. I brought my friends just now to talk, but we're trying to advocate so we can get some help too, because we're not getting any help. You know, we're being stuck inside, and we're being prisoners in our home. Last time I did come, you did help me with transportation, that little, the guy. I called the number, and I did get the, what's it called? Space Coast Transportation, yes. I did get the number, so I'm thankful for that. Thank you, Mr. very much, for the little transportation. But I need help. I need to get the application. I need to fill it out, and I shouldn't be on the bottom of the list, because I filled out an application, and Janie, who's computer savvy, she did doo-doo-doo, and boom, she got it. I shouldn't be on the bottom of the list for that. I have my receipts. $800 doesn't get us far, sir. Please help us. We need help. And the person, I'm here advocating for, this other person, self-employed, a veteran, hasn't received anything since March. Nothing. You understand? So I don't know, where do we fall? Where do people fall in? I mean, you have to look at different avenues. Please look at different avenues, how you're distributing this money, especially us in Titusville, or the people that are homeless, or, you know, people that live in these tents or communities. Help us. We need help. Please, don't look at it just for, you know, anybody computer savvy and stuff like that. No regrets. You know, the small businesses and stuff, they need money too. Everybody needs to eat. But please, help us, little ones. Thank you so much. Have a great day.
Thank you, ma'am. You too. All right. Welcome. You've got three minutes, ma'am.
First of all, thanks, Ian, for your hard work on this program. I'm looking at my eyes on this screen, and they're dark, because I don't think I've slept in the last two months. It was interesting to me that the number presented here was, we think there's about $100,000 worth of need, because that would stupefy me, honestly. I'm sorry, I'm veering off my comments, but I do administer a local Facebook site where a community comes together to provide aid to one another while they're waiting for aid from you. The last few weeks have been filled with more and more need. A woman recently wrote that she'd been furloughed since mid-March. When talking about her unemployment claim, she wrote, "I end every phone call in tears. I just purchased my first home, which I worked very hard for. I've been working and paying taxes since I was 15. This is the one time after all these years, and I'm forced to rely on my government and it's failing me. I could lose everything." Another wrote, "I'm a single mother of an eight-year-old, and I'm a server full-time at a well-known restaurant. I've been furloughed, and I haven't received anything, not my taxes, not my stimulants, and not a dime of unemployment. I'm so far behind, I don't know what to do." Someone else said, "I'm in absolute panic mode." These are the stories I'm hearing every single day when I'm delivering and sending these folks out to deliver groceries to their neighbors because they can't feed their kids. In Pasco County... In Pasco County, they initially approved $4 million in rental and mortgage assistance with a maximum of 3,500. Ours is 7,200. And their AMI limit was 80%. Ours is 140%. So you could make $105,000 and get this funds if you had a family of five. Their application limit of 1,200 residents was reached in 15 minutes on May 7th. So far, you've allocated about the same as Pasco, 4.4 million, and it's not nearly enough. I'm here again today to ask that the remaining unallocated funds of 40 million to be allocated entirely to direct aid for families and that the 21 million in unobligated funds be utilized to provide economic support for small businesses. For context, in Polk, where they received 126 million in CARES Act funding, they've allocated 30 million for health and human service needs and 40 million for small businesses. In Lee, the most recent proposal we could find sought 50 to 75 million of their 134.5 million in CARES funding to immediate assistance for individuals, family, and local small businesses. In addition, I'd love a couple of improvements to the proposed allocation process. Recent research has found that COVID-19 has had a disproportionate impact on low-wage earners. A new survey from the Federal Reserve found that almost 40% of households earning less than $40,000 a year experienced at least one job loss in March versus 13% of those earning more than $100,000. The U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics in April 2020 shows that leisure and hospitality workers have an unemployment rate of 39.3%.
Thank you, Ms. Patel. I appreciate you coming out for public comment. And for the clerk's benefit, that was Stacy Patel from Satellite Beach. Do we have an idea in terms of how many more?
Three more.
Three or so, Jim? Thank you, sir. All right, Mr. Patel, if you'd start with your name and the city you reside in, please, sir.
Sure. Sanjay Patel, Satellite Beach. Good morning, commissioners. So it's become abundantly clear that in our community, folks are hanging on by a thread. I'm here today to advocate for more funding so that we can support these folks that need it. This was a comment that was posted just yesterday to our mutual aid group. If I was getting unemployment like I am supposed to be, then I wouldn't need additional federal aid. But since I've been waiting since March, another stimulus bill will be the only way that I can make it through. I pray every day that I will check the DEO site or my bank account and see that they have finally processed my claim. That comment quickly had five replies immediately after. So there's a couple of things that were said today that I have to address. So first off, it was deeply disappointing that the first comment about this program was, are illegals going to get access or eligibility for this? First off, no one is illegal. If you look at the number of undocumented residents in this county, so you have a program where I can verify, it's not anecdotal, there are families struggling, and you're going to throw out a program because a few folks might get that support? I find it ironic as well that the folks who make up the backbone of our economy, especially the service industry, so when we talk about going out to eat, who's washing the dishes, the toilets, picking the fruits and vegetables in our farm, in the, in these large farms? These are folks who we've dubbed essential workers, right? We can't function without them. They pay their taxes, they live in the shadows. I myself was actually once undocumented. And so to vilify a program because a handful of people who are actually starving, they don't have enough to take care of their families, is just deplorable. The next thing I want to address is, they, Tabai, Commissioner Tabai, you mentioned folks who had a felony. If you have set yourself back by committing a crime, it is infinitely harder to get out of that hole. It's hard to get a job, and every single thing takes its toll. So I completely disagree. We need to make sure that folks have a chance to rehabilitate and get ahead. What you're witnessing in terms of the folks struggling here, it seems like every level of government wants to shirk their responsibility. So we talk about, you know, folks are getting $1,200 stimulus checks and 600 bucks a week from unemployment. I asked, last time I came to this commission, have you yourself gone onto that system and tried to apply? It is a joke. It is a catastrophe. The next thing I want to point out is that we have the chance to have a special legislative session to fix things like these broken unemployment systems. Every single legislator in the State House and State Senate that has constituents in Brevard voted no against a special session. I think that this is the time where folks are looking for their last resort. We need to help them, and we need to help them now. And I think that 4.4 million if...
Thank you, Mr. Patel. That wasn't coincidental.
Hi, I'm Catherine Haynes. I'm a resident of Melbourne. I spoke at your last meeting on May 5th. My concern then and now pertains to the most vulnerable in our community, struggling during this pandemic. I spoke at the last meeting about lifting, about the lifting of the statewide moratorium on evictions and foreclosures. Fortunately, our governor extended the moratorium until June 2nd. Fortunately, you approved allocating 4.4 million to housing needs out of the CARES Act that the county received in April. This allocation was, as many of you indicated, a short-term effort to address a long-term need. For instance, Commissioner Isnardi, you stated, "My concern right now is with the people who are suffering and getting them the immediate need, help they need. The funds were set up and allocated to provide this help." So now my concern is, will 4.4 million meet the tremendous need that will be exposed when the moratorium is lifted? As of May 4th, only 48% of more than 1.3 million unemployed claims have been paid to needy Florida residents. As of May 14th, only 43% of those Floridians applying for claims through the federal pandemic unemployment assistance have been paid. The Associated Press ranks Florida as among the slowest states in processing unemployment applications. Basically, it seems we are the skimpiest state in the country when it comes to assistance for families struggling to make ends meet. Given this, how can most families afford on June 3rd to make June's rent or mortgage paid payment? Not to mention that unpaid rent or mortgages during the moratorium are not forgiven or frozen. Additionally, many tenants do not have jobs to return to now. Allocating 4.4 million to housing needs was a good start, but please do not stop there. People have lost their livelihoods through no fault of their own. Commissioner Smith, you alluded to that. Please take additional steps to ensure that they do not also lose the roof over their heads.
Thank you, ma'am. Any more, Jim?
We have one more.
Okay, thanks. Welcome, sir. I love the shirt.
Thank you. Charles Tovey, 2555, Melbourne, Florida. Trickle-down theory doesn't work, and I'm ashamed of my government, my country, government employees, elected officials, appointed officials. I'm ashamed, not all of them, of some of them. Excuse me. I am a convicted felon. I've done double everything that was required of me to pay for my crime. My crime was manslaughter. My brakes failed on the way home to three miles to drive these, my employees home. The man in front of me was a public defender's office. He slammed on his brakes. I put on my brakes. My caliper locked up and threw me in the other lane, and a man's life was taken for it. And I've given everything I can to make amends for that man and everything to the country and everything, but yet I am prejudiced against. And there is no second chance for anybody if they make a mistake or something out of their control, or people that get cased up for things that they're not even responsible for. There's people in prison getting released for 30 years because they've been convicted of the wrong crime. As there no leeway, no care for, nothing. The three state troopers said that they saw no signs of impairment, felt they couldn't charge me and didn't charge me, but the state picked up the charges and here I sit. I did all my sentencing and got out of everything and moved to Palm Shores. No, I moved to Melbourne and then Palm Shores enclosed against me and used everything they can to run me off my property. No one's helped me. No one's offered to help me, no matter if it's a church or any kind of organization. Everybody runs from me and flees like roaches. And why? There's no comp, no consider, no, zero tolerance for anything. I come to a meeting, I cough, and they throw me out of the meeting. But everybody else is allowed with their selective enforcement and their friends, and it's okay. I've made mistakes. I've made amends, and the rest of my life, I will be punished. And why? America, world, thank you very much. Have a nice day.
Thank you so much, Mr. Tovey. Ian?
Normally, I don't respond back to public comments, but if I could, I'd like to address a few things that I heard during the public comments.
Please.
First off, we need to remember what these dollars and what the rules that came from Treasury requires of us as a county. They have to have an impact from coronavirus. These are not dollars that are to be used to correct societal ills. I've already had some conversations with agencies, for example, regarding the chronically homeless. If you're homeless prior to the coronavirus, I can't assist you with these funds that have been set aside because that was a previous impact. It's not directly related to the coronavirus. That's true of everything that we're going to be looking at doing underneath this program. You know, evictions, I've had conversations with my staff. As Commissioner Isnardi had stated, just because there's a moratorium doesn't mean that the bill's not going to come due. The problem is we have a max that's allowable under this policy. So there is the potential that somebody's going to come and need more than they are eligible for. And in that instance, the policy allows for, if the landlord will write off the difference, or if there's a ability to pay that difference out of some other pot of money, a relative of friend. If not, we will not be able to assist them. Because the bottom line is, there's no point in paying a landlord $3,000 if their bill is 4,000 and they're still going to be evicted once the moratorium's out, is lifted. So we are looking at those. These are going to be very difficult decisions that we're going to have to make, but we're trying to make those decisions in line with the guidance that we've received from Treasury, as well as what's in the policy that we brought before you. The idea of layering funding, I think I mentioned that I'm already looking at trying to set up meetings with the different funding agencies and looking at what the other agencies in our county are receiving. We were hoping to have that meeting on Thursday. We are having to push that back because some of the other municipalities are just starting to open up, and they've requested that we push that back to allow them that time to open up. So we are moving forward, as the policy allows, to add additional documents. One is going to be a release request of information. So everyone who comes to our program, we're going to have that so we're able to communicate and have that conversation that one of the speakers talked about regarding all the other avenues of assistance that are being sought by these individuals. The application itself, the first question is, have you, have you received anything from anywhere else? There's a warning on it about duplication of benefits. There's also an area further on in the application where we ask them to list what all those The, and we do try and have a heart in the department. We have had some internal conversations regarding if we have some individuals who need further assistance above and beyond what's already being able to be provided through, for access, to potentially look at doing home visits. Again, if we can do what's necessary to protect them and our staff to be able to do that to accommodate those individuals. As for disproportionately helping the higher income, while you have the ability for a family of four under this program who makes up to $96,880 to receive assistance, you also have to keep in mind, we're still going to be backing out all the assistance they've already received, plus they might not have as much need as someone who has lower income. Somebody who's at that higher income level might have had dollars to keep their mortgage two months up to date, and now they only need one month of assistance. So we'll have that review of their documentation to, again, we're trying to serve everyone. There is nothing in the CARES Act that requires dollars be allocated based on age, gender, socioeconomics. These are dollars that we're trying to get out into the community to provide assistance to the community. And while there are some disproportionate impacts to lower income, there again is no indication that the dollars that came to the county are specifically for that lower income. There are dollars that went directly to the homeless coalition. And so we're, as part of that conversation with the different funders, we're having discussions about, well, if they're at a certain income level, the homeless coalition can address them. There are dollars that are potentially, they're, they're on the table at the state level for potential sweep, but if that's the case, there might be additional dollars under housing to address these things. And so we'd look at those dollars addressing whatever that income population is, and then restricting the CARES dollars to the populations that are not being served by those dollars until, you know, because again, those are going to potentially be a lot smaller pots of money till those dollars run away, run out, and then we would look at expanding the population being served with the CARES dollars. So we are, we are trying to look at some of those issues. We are not going to be able to help everyone. There are people that we're going to have to say no to, and those are going to be difficult conversations. But the ultimately, what we have to do as staff is make sure we follow the guidance that's given by Treasury so there are no ill effects, no negative consequences for the county.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Ian?
One quick question.
Commissioner, please.
Thank you, Ian. There's a legal term called reliance, and my question is, and sorry, I didn't, didn't ask this prior, but are you concerned whether it's $4 million or $40 million that are handed out? There's, I'm sure thousands of people that we're not hearing about up here that saved and had two or three months of reserves for this, just these type of occurrences. But then, as you found out, or as we're finding out, there's many people that are not. And if we provide two, three months of assistance here, are we taking away the incentive next time there's an issue, whether it be a hurricane or, God forbid, another pandemic? But they don't need to save because, you know, we've got millions of dollars to hand out. What are we doing to prevent that reliance that these individuals will have more so than just the direct handout from county, but the stimulus check? So this isn't just you, but how do we prevent this? How do we give them good economic advice? Because if we're just handing money out and not teaching them to be better with their money as they go forward, maybe, you know, you don't need a $2,400 mortgage or whatever the heck. How are we, is there any educational component, I guess, is my question to this? I know many, I mentioned, you mentioned other programs that we had in the past had educational components. Sorry. I guess the long question is, is there any educational component to this?
The, the programs that we currently have that provide that educational piece, those are ongoing funding sources. We've made that a part of the process. These dollars are crisis dollars. As far as I know from the CARES Act language itself, there's no requirement for that type of education. My hope is, because again, this is a crisis, and the fact is that because of the population we're able to serve, with not being able to serve people who have the chronic, those chronic issues, those people who have not been potentially looking at those issues, somebody who was unemployed prior to the coronavirus, if they're still unemployed, they're not going to be eligible because there's no, you know, I think one of the comments was 25% of zero is still zero. That's true, but then you can't prove that there's an impact from coronavirus. As for reliance in the future, I don't know that there's any way to control for that other than to hope that the majority of people who are looking for this assistance will, once they're back on their feet, take this as a learning opportunity that I don't want to ever go back through this again. I think you saw that after the... I think you saw that after the Great Depression, uh, in our country is we had a whole generation of people who as a result of that impact, they're, they were, you know, the, the, um, I don't remember, can't remember the word, but they were very tight with their money in the years that, in that generation that followed the Great Depression. So the hope is that there's that same kind of learning curve for them. But there is no plan, there are no dollars under this for that type of education program. However, like I said, with the other dollars that are available, one of the things that we had brought before you at the last meeting was the, uh, substantial amendment for our Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Funds. They've expanded out the ability to do public services. There is the potential, I'd have to go back and look, but with that expansion of public services, we were going to bring back to you what we're going to spend those dollars on. And it's really kind of holding off to see what some of the gaps were as we started implementing all these other things. And there is the potential to put, take some of those dollars and provide some of that education that you're talking about.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Golden?
Uh, yes. It's funny because you, you went through the four points that I brought up that, or that I was going to bring up and either comment on or ask you about. Because I think that, you know, again, a lot of those comments were probably more directed at a systemic chronic problem than a current one that's directly related to coronavirus. And that family that makes 96 may have two working household members at, you know, 45 or 50,000 dollars that both lost their jobs. So regardless of whether or not they fall into a different income bracket, still that, that job loss still means that they can't feed their family. So I'm glad that we're including the very low income to the upper income. And also too, I mean, important to mention is the free transportation that we've had available with SCAT. So anybody can get around if they need to and get to work or, or otherwise if they're working. But, um, about the applications, what are we going to do to make them available, make them easy for people? Because that was a complaint that people don't have computers, people can't print. I mean, how can we just make sure that maybe like the unemployment, leave them at the libraries?
Well, and, and that is kind of what I mentioned earlier. I've already had a discussion with Jeff Thompson, the Libraries Director, to make, we're going to be having copies of the application at every library location, just like they've had the unemployment applications available. We're also going to make those libraries drop-off points. So if people have completed applications and it's only their library that they can get to, they can drop them at the library directly to a librarian or maybe in the book return, uh, if they feel more comfortable doing it that way. And I will be sending staff on a daily basis to go to those libraries to pick up those applications for us to process. Like I mentioned, the, the online application software that we're looking at, we'll also have the ability to do, uh, a mobile submission. So the plan there, and we had a demo just yesterday. And if it looks good, we can actually implement that potentially this week. They'd have the ability to take pictures of their documents and upload it directly through their phone. Uh, it's a very versatile system. They can, if they're going in and they're applying online and they need to stop the application to go get documents, it will see, save their place, uh, and send them a link to be able to pick up where they left off. Some of it though is just a, a function of, we have to have the documents in order to prove and document need, uh, not only under coronavirus, but also need for the dollars that they, as a, as a household need. Uh, and so it's, it has to be a requirement of the program.
And it prevents abuse and it makes sure that the people that truly need it are the ones that get it. So it isn't just someone saying that, oh yeah, I need the money and they may not. So I, I mean, I think it's, we are responsible for those funds. We are responsible to handle them correctly and to make sure that the people who truly need them get them. And usually somebody who needs help isn't too humble to ask for it if they're really suffering. So I think it's great. I mean, I'm really excited. And you, and I asked this already, but you think, you believe that 4.4 will get you through until July? Do we have a better idea or would you feel more comfortable, assuming the board is supportive, with some more room if we go over that dollar amount?
I, I, I think the need is going to, like I said, gut tells me the need is going to be greater. I cannot tell you how much greater. I think we need to...
I think I may be able to make it a little bit easier if it's okay with everyone. If you tell me that you're at, at any risk of running out, I'll just call the special meeting. Is that fair?
Well, yeah, that's what I was going to suggest. I wanted to float it with my fellow commissioners, but we all know we're going to be off the month of June. But if you get to a point where you think that it would be, you need some input from us, you could request a special meeting, even if we're out of town, we could do a virtual meeting and we could address your concerns. I would be supportive of that.
I'll just tell you right now, if you want it, I'll, I'll set it for you. I mean, as long as the board doesn't tell me that's not their inclination.
Yeah, that would be my only fear is to make sure that we have those funds available.
Yeah, and I'd forgotten I was going to mention regarding the food program because that's my fear, like I said, once we get into the summer months, that could really take off. Uh, and I know there was a question about that. I forgot to mention that in my response back to the speakers. The, the plan there and what was presented to you on the fifth in that staff report was the ability to not only buy commodities for people to make meals themselves, but also complete meals. And the plan is not to, with any of these dollars, just give lump sum dollars to either individuals or agencies. Uh, we're going to plan to do kind of what the EOC is currently doing, which is backfilling the food banks, buying the commodities for the food banks, looking at the agencies that do feeding. Uh, the example that's used often is, uh, Aging Matters because of Meals on Wheels. Uh, it's, we have a current contract with them. So it'd be an amendment to the contract, but it's got to be something that's different. They can't just use these dollars to do what their normal program is. There'd have to be a tie to coronavirus. So that's what we're still working through. There are other agencies that do feeding of children, you know, the Children's Hunger Project. And so, you know, there are those agencies that we'd look at trying to buy commodities, buy meals from, uh, not give lump sums of money. So it would be buying a service.
And we have some of those other dollars and that are allocated that we can probably pull from as well.
Again, the C W G C V dollars could be used for that also.
Right. Awesome.
Sir, Jim, please.
And Ian already pointed out, I want to point out, you know, the impacts have to be related to coronavirus. And if we see the 4.4 million is, we're in danger of running out before July, we can speak to you again and then we'll contact you, Mr. Chair, to see about setting up a special meeting.
And I'll just let you all know, since it doesn't sound like there's much opposition, if they ask, they're going to get the special meeting. All right. Any, any other questions?
Thank you, Ian.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioners, we do need you to review and approve the attached Coronavirus Assistance Program Policy or Procedure, excuse me.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
All right. I think you may have beaten her. Okay, all right. We'll do it that way then. Commissioner Snarney for the motion, Commissioner Pritchett for the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, passes 3-2 with Commissioner Tabayan, myself and the negative. All right, we'll move on, as I mentioned, to J1. I appreciate everyone's patience in the audience here. Went a little longer than I had hoped for this last item, but, um, I know we have several folks that are here. Would the commission prefer to have a staff intro or does everyone kind of know where we're at at this point?
I mean, you can do a, a brief intro so the public is more aware of...
Ms. Bentley?
All right. Um, in April 2020, the board requested a proposal for changes to the Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan to return the emergency management, uh, voting function to the Board of County Commissioners instead of the policy group. And, uh, we have presented to you the proposed changes pursuant to that request, along with the 2020 plan that is up at the state for review for compliance at this time. Do you want more detail at this time or?
No.
Maybe we should start up with public comment because I know there were a lot of folks that have come out here and have waited a little while to, to speak.
We invited all the city folks that come on up, so...
Perfect. Do we have an order for them or?
No, I was just, uh, Mr. Chair, if I could take a presumption, start from the back of the room up front so that way it's easier for them to see who's spoken.
Yeah, I'm happy to do it any which way. Want to start with Mr. Dipmore?
Well, and I was also...
Mr. Morgan?
Yeah, you probably want to...
Looks like you're behind the mask.
Why are the rules different for these guys as opposed to public comment? Why, why are these guys allowed to come to the meeting and the public comment?
I think because they were invited by staff.
Yeah, but we've been, the city folks have...
City officials and the cities and municipalities have been really good involving us in their discussions, um, at their group meetings, so we invited them up to the meeting.
And I don't, I don't, I'm not opposed to it, but I would just ask that we be consistent in the future so we don't look like we're giving favorable treatment to one group of people over another, whether that was the intent or not. If you don't mind, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to address you this morning regarding the proposed amendments to the county's comprehensive emergency management plan.
And Scott, I apologize for interjecting, but just before you get started, I, I know who everyone is in the back, but I don't know that the clerks are on board. So just, um, for future, if folks would just state their name and their city. So this is Scott Morgan with West Melbourne. Thank you. I apologize.
And, and as you noted, we do have several, uh, city officials here, both appointed and elected officials. Uh, this is a matter of importance to cities. So first, we wanted to extend our thanks and appreciation to your management staff, particularly our thanks and appreciation to County Attorney Eden Bentley for keeping Brevard's municipalities informed as she prepared the staff report, uh, that you were considering in response to the previous board direction on the subject. Uh, second, being frank, we wanted to let you know that most cities are not in favor of the idea of the county commission or in the event a quorum cannot be assembled during an emergency, one member of the commission making decisions about strategic responses during emergencies. This concern is not about the competency or judgment of any particular incumbent, but rather about structure. Uh, we understand that the current structure was adopted about, uh, 20, 2005, after there were some strategic choices and communications, uh, difficulties that, uh, were experienced during the back-to-back-to-back, uh, 2004 hurricanes. And until the COVID-19 pandemic, uh, we believe that structure has served us all pretty well. Uh, that said, uh, we understand that the commission is likely poised to proceed with the proposed changes uh, in the emergency decision-making structure. And in the spirit of cooperation and the desire to work together, we wanted to offer some thoughts about both the near term and the longer term. For the nearer term, um, setting the COVID-19 pandemic aside, for the immediately approaching hurricane season, uh, we would request that the commission consider proposing effective date of the proposed C E M P changes to December 1st, 2020. Uh, this would allow the commission to continue to be the decision-maker for reopening, uh, under the COVID-19 emergency while maintaining the currency, current policy group decision-making structure for the current, uh, for the coming hurricane season. For the longer term, and perhaps more importantly, it should be recognized that city residents, uh, represent more than 60% of the population in Brevard County and have significant resources that can be, uh, mobilized during county-wide emergencies. And city share with the county and with other governmental and non-governmental partners significant operational responsibilities, uh, including law enforcement, fire, public works and utilities. As such, in concert and support of the recommendations seven and eight in your staff report before this morning, cities respectfully request that the commission authorize emergency management and the county attorney's staff to work with city representatives to seek to formally increase the role cities have in advising the commission on strategic responses during county-wide emergencies. One potential suggestion is included in your staff report.
Scott, you're, you're running out of time here?
Sure.
I think you just wrap up. I apologize.
Sure. Uh, there is one in your, in your staff report, uh, which would significantly increase city representation as your strategic advisor during emergencies. Again, we thank you for the opportunity to provide you with our recommendations as you consider these changes. We look forward to working with you and your professional management staff and seeking to provide the best possible, most integrated, seamless local government responses to future emergencies.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Well, I was watching my clock and I thought, is this a time warp?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and County Commissioners. I'm Shannon Lewis, the Melbourne City Manager. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today. Um, regarding the county's Comprehensive Emergency Man- uh, Management Plan changes, our city council and staff has had an opportunity to review those. Um, the City of Melbourne Council is supportive of the changes that the county commission has before them today. The Melbourne City Council believes that the Brevard County Commissioners, as the governing body, um, should have the decision-making authority during declared emergencies. And with that said, I can tell you that, um, the city does acknowledge the value that the policy group brings and, um, as a strategic advisor and respectfully requests and encourages that the county commission expand the role of municipalities within that, um, within that body. That would provide diversity found throughout the county. We have shared an excellent relationship with the county staff, including the Brevard County Emergency Management Staff. We look forward to continuing to work with them and continuing to work for you for the benefit of our communities. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Barker, welcome.
Good morning. Uh, thank you for, for, uh, taking the time out to listen to us today. We appreciate your work, especially during this pandemic. We recognize that it's been difficult for all of us. Um, I'm sorry, Courtney Barker, City of Satellite Beach, sorry.
Thank you.
Um, we, I know, after this, wow, we all become friends, so it's hard to, we forget. Um, so we, we respectfully, um, disagree with the county commission's direction with, or Ms. Bentley's, um, suggestion for the county commission. Uh, we believe that our hurricane responses have always been really, really well done and we have always been really great partners during those emergencies. And so we'd hate to see that changed. Um, we don't see, uh, that as a problem that we really need to solve here with this change. So we would, uh, recommend that you look at the policy group changes for a longer emergency like a pandemic. It's like something beyond three weeks. And I think that was your concerns in your previous discussions as a county commission. Um, and we would be supportive of that as well because, quite frankly, um, when we did a city of, uh, declaration of emergency, you know, um, the city manager typically takes, takes over at that point, even though we talk to our council members constantly. But after about two or three weeks, it got strange, you know, he's like, you know, it's so slow moving. There's no reason why we can't have a city council meeting and discuss this in a transparent manner, which is exactly what we started doing. So, um, so we agree with that and, you know, we would be as supportive of that change um, on a county-wide level for a longer-term emergency. But, um, but for the shorter-term emergencies, we really do need to have that very quick reaction and that expertise that comes with emergency management staff and longer-serving administrative officials that have been doing this for a very long time. And we think that that, our hurricane response has always worked well in the past. You know, why change that now? So we would, um, support a change for a longer-term emergency and we really appreciate, uh, the chance of coming here today and speaking with you. And we'll be glad to help you out in any changes you want to make in the future. And I also wanted to say the council did agree that they wanted to, um, see some more city representation, particularly beachside, beachside city representation on the policy group in the future. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, who else have we got? Don't all line up at once. Okay, I guess that's it. Surprised, I thought we had a few more. All right, so I, I don't know what folks want to do with this, but, um, I'll just jump in real, real quickly. I've always wanted to be a, a good partner with the cities. I've been trying to do that as, as much as I've been able to, uh, over the time I've served in elected office. I don't have a concern with having the cities more involved or as involved. Uh, but that said, I, I think the point that was just raised, uh, by Ms. Barker as far as the concern over long-term emergencies, that seems to be what the, at least from what I've taken home from the commission, that seems to be what the, the biggest concern was, having the policy group make decisions when there's such a long period of time that the commission can be called to meet without any sort of, um, issue as far as the notice requirement or otherwise. So I, I don't know, Ms. Bentley, if you want to speak as to how this would impact, um, long-term emergencies, whether it would impact them in a different way than, than short-term issues or whether this would be universally the same, which would be my understanding?
This is universally the same as drafted.
Ms. Tabaya, Commissioner Tabaya?
Thank you.
I think I'm going to stand up, so...
Yeah, I'm looking for a button. Would you like to?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
I'm after Christine.
Okay, that's fair.
I'm Commissioner Snarney, sorry.
Again, I, I want to, uh, thank Ms. Bentley's office for putting together, uh, a plan in such a short period of time. Um, I think it's bold as well as, uh, transparent. Uh, this is going to move many of our procedures to ordinance as opposed to the closed, uh, comp plan. So, uh, more things would be done in sunshine. I think it also is wonderful to bring more input from our partner agencies, our cities, ensuring that county-elected officials remain in charge, uh, whenever possible. Uh, this new strategy group, uh, that would be created under this plan would include, and I just want to go over this list, but it, because it hasn't been mentioned, uh, county manager, designated city town manager from North Brevard, city town manager from Central Brevard, city town... Central Brevard, city town manager from South Brevard, city town manager from Beach Municipality, school superintendent designee, sheriff designee, county public safety director designee, county fire chief designee, president of the Space Coast Police Chiefs Association, president of the Space Coast Fire Chiefs Association, COCO, or Melbourne Water Utility Director, Florida Department of Health, Brevard, representative and emergency management director. So you certainly have, in the staff recommendation, have included more folks in this all-new strategy group, which I greatly appreciate. So I have a long motion here, but I certainly want to hear with, before I go through it, because there's many, you know, steps, it's got eight or nine things to actually put this into play. So I wanted to hear what other folks had to say. But again, thank you, staff, for putting together something so quickly.
Commissioners Snardi?
Yeah, I want to thank Ms. Bentley for all your hard work on this. And I know it kind of put our staff in a unique situation, because we obviously have the cities who still want to have a vote. And what I took issue from, and like, for a long time, and I understand that hurricanes are different, is that there were clear differences on not just what city representatives believed or thought should be happening within their city, or thought that the county's rules should be, but even among the commission. Because even when the commission made, you know, very clear our position, our representative on commission maybe had a different position, which, you know, you can respect. But I, I wanted to avoid all of that. And we don't go into cities and tell them, you know, override their decisions and tell them how to run their city, and I don't want them to be able to do that with us. They can easily make their own rules. They've made that pretty clear when it came to the beach closures. We got some pretty scathing emails from elected officials from other municipalities that disagree with us. I don't want to get into that mix again. We're the ones accountable for county decisions. We're the ones held accountable by our residents. Decision's good or bad, it needs to be out in the public, like Commissioner Tobias just said. And it needs to, we need to be, we need to be accountable, you know? And when you have elected, not elected people making decisions and voting behind closed doors, not in the sunshine, you can get the information, but it's quite difficult on something so important, as, as big public policy. I think we need to be the ones responsible, good or bad, accountable, good or bad, and the public, good or bad. So I'm, I'm all for this. I like it. I like the idea of having the advisory, the strategy group to, to give us their input based on the needs of their city. But they, they always have the option to override within their own municipality, at least with, with what we're doing. So again, I, I like this. I think that it's a long overdue. And I mean, we even had our own county employees completely against what the commission's will are. And, and, you know, you can love us or hate us, we are the policymakers. So that's just how it's gotta be. So I don't want, I don't want county staff to be in a position, I don't want this to become a battle with county staff. I have my own heartburn over the way some, some of our own emergency management staff handled things, and I've already addressed that with our manager. And so hopefully, now moving forward, those changes will be made, and we'll do a better job. So I like this, and I, I will be anxious to hear your motion, and I'll second it if it sounds nice.
And you won't if it isn't.
Right.
Commissioner Pritchett?
I also want to thank you, Ms. Bentley, for, for hearing us and drafting this together. You know, when we have different events that happen in the community, we have to respond with a good response that makes the adequate changes. So I, I think this, I'm, I like this also. So I too, Commissioner Tobias, if it's a nice motion, I'll be voting with you too. You know, if, if we add on to this board, it's fine, but they're gonna have to all cram into that little room in a hurricane. And what I like about this is that the, the chair will be able to hear, and you'll be able to sign the state of emergency. But when there are things that should come to an ordinance, it, it needs to come before the commission. It's what we were elected to do, and we do have that duty and responsibility. And again, we, we said this many times in meetings, the buck does stop here. You know, it's something that we have to do for our citizens. And I gotta say this too, I represent four cities, and I take, I take great responsibility in doing that. I get a hold of the city of Titusville, I get a hold of COCO. And, you know, as far as representation of cities, the five of us represent all the cities. And I'm getting phone calls all the time from, from Mr. Larisse. I mean, we have long conversations. So I care very deeply about North Brevard and the city. So I just want to say that there is representation from the county commission. But as far as the policy board, I don't know that I've had representation of North Brevard on the policy board. So I think this is a better fit, countywide. And so I, I, I like this. And as far as other people wanting to jump in and, and have an input, or be locked in that little room during a crisis, that's fine with me also. But I do support this. And I also think it's a good thing, because we do have these conversations open in the public. And when it's in the policy room, it isn't open. And I listened in to many of them. And I was a little surprised, after we gave direction of wanting to have input, that the policy group, not that they're not all good people, that it was, it was completely ignored. And that's when I realized we had to make some changes here. So I'm gonna support, hopefully, your motion also, Commissioner Tobias.
Commissioner Smith, do you have anything?
Oh, can I say one more thing?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
I also got the data of the surrounding counties. And out of 10 counties, seven of them, the Brevard County, I mean, not the Brevard County Commission, the county commission makes this decision. This is already in place, what we're changing. One of them, the county manager would be the one to sign it. There's only one Hillsboro that does what we're doing now. So as far as what other counties in the state are doing, we're moving now towards what other counties do.
Commissioner Smith, do you have anything, sir? That's right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I like this. I've spoken to Eden about it several times, and, and I'll give her another pat on the back, that's five of us. She's done outstanding work. She had tremendous insight. She heard what we were saying, and she's looked at the big picture. And I can tell you, having been in that small little room, the policy board worked very well in that situation. But in the situation we just incurred, we all know the, the hiccups and the stumbles that we had. So I think this solves that problem. And going forward, if we have a hurricane, I think we're in good shape. I can tell you that during Hurricane Irma, when I was chair, I had the benefit of having a lot of people in that room that had gone through it just the year before with Hurricane Matthew, I believe, and Jim Barfield was the chair. And they stumbled a few times, and they said admittedly, the problem was that there was no continuity. We don't have a hurricane every year. So the previous hurricane to 2016, when Commissioner Barfield was chair, was in 2004. So most of those people that were in that room weren't there this time, in 16. So they were kind of learning on the fly. So in 17, it was a piece of cake. So I think that's the key, is continuity. And I think this, this plan here will, will serve us all very well.
I just want to add a, a couple things, and then I'd be happy to, to take your motion, Commissioner Tobias. And again, I'm not trying to sway anyone's vote, I just want to kind of lay out my thoughts in terms of why I'm voting the way that I'm voting on this. Because I, quite frankly, I wasn't sure which way I was gonna vote until yesterday on this particular item. I had a conversation with Jim McKnight, the city manager over COCO Beach, and it was vacillating as to, to which way to go on this, and I, I think that essentially won me over. But, you know, some of the things to keep in mind, and I'm not gonna take credit for all of this, you know, some of these items are brought up to me by others who I respect locally with our, our partner cities. We had among, if not the lowest positivity rate for coronavirus infections of any of our peers, certainly of any of the adjoining counties. The governor was running around touting us as the example county of, you know, what to do, and what a success looks like in dealing with a crisis. I understand that there's always some question as to how much input is the appropriate level of input. And I, I know that no one here is a dictator or a totalitarian, but any time that we look to consolidate power, when you have a situation that when you look at the objective metrics is working well, it causes me concern that even if you do get a benefit, a subjective benefit, which we may well from, from implementing some changes, and I do think there's some changes that are appropriate, that are among those suggested, I just worry that we put ourselves in a position where we lose the trust of our partner cities. I can tell you that some of the positives are also the negatives, some of the negatives are also positives. And I'll, I'll give you an example of that. So in terms of having a slew of non-elected, or bulk of the policy group consisting of non-elected individuals, that's good and that's bad. You know, I think that everyone here is well-intentioned, but I, I could see a situation where you have someone that's up for election, that has concerns based upon electability, and may not be as inclined to make an unpopular choice that's still the best choice for the constituents. Having folks that also have numerous years on staff at the various cities, at the school board, at the police departments, or I should say, the sheriff's office, at the county, you get that institutional knowledge that frankly, none of us have. You know, the most that anyone here is entitled to be a commissioner is eight years consecutively. So, you know, I, I think trying to, to work with the cities as much as possible is, is a good goal. I can tell you that my, my dealings with the cities have been, if not universally positive, about as close to it as one could expect, given the horrible circumstances that everyone was dealing with. That said, I, I think that there are some good things. I think that the policy group, as it's consisted, it is, it is a little bit lopsided in having too much county staff having input. Obviously, you have the fire chief, you have our public safety director, you have emergency operations director, you have the county manager, you have the county attorney, you have the chair of the county commission. It would be smarter to have a, a more diversified group, or even if it's geographically diversified amongst the, the different commission districts. But I, I don't know that I, I can sign on to something like this. I think the concern as far as long-term emergencies, if we had it more narrowly tailored toward long-term emergencies, to have power, decision-making come back to the commission, I would be in favor of that. But the problem is, this is simply too broad. I think that the cities have done an excellent job. I think that there is expertise on the policy group as it's currently composed. Again, I'm not saying it's the be-all, end-all. I think there are some changes that are appropriate to make. But I, I think this just goes too far in that it addresses all varieties of, of emergency, not just the variety of emergency that I think was more contemplated as being problematic, those that are longer-term, that really can wait to have the 24-hour notice of the commission, where ideas can be hashed out, and we can get folks showing up, just as they did today, to express their opinion and have their input. So, you know, with that, that's, that's essentially where I'm at. But I'm, I'm happy to accept Commissioner Tobias' motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And this was, just came out of staff recommendations. I haven't thrown anything in here, but it is nine points. Mr. Chair, make a motion to approve changes to the proposed 2020 Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan submitted to the state of Florida for approval and adopt, adoption. The plan is amended per the attached resolution. Number two, direct staff to implement the same changes to the existing Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan and submit changes to the state of Florida if necessary. Number three, direct staff to make all other minor amendments necess, necessitated, sorry, not enough coffee, by the changes in the section presented in amendment or attachment one in the 2020 and the 2016 plans. Continue. Number four, continue authorization of county manager or as designee to sign extensions of local state of emergency as needed. Number five, continue current delegation of emergency authority to the vice chair until the end of term as vice chair to allow consistency with the existing and ongoing pandemic procedures. Number six, in the event an issue arises regarding FEMA reimbursement eligibility as a result of any proposed action, staff is authorized to take all necessary steps to preserve FEMA eligibility. Number seven, direct emergency management staff and the county attorney to meet with city representatives to explore options to increase city input and participation in emergency procedures. Number eight, include city representation in the annual pre-storm session organizational meaning of emergency management and the Emergency Operations Center. And number nine, direct staff to begin the process to implement emergency procedures through ordinance where practical. That's the motion, Mr. Chair.
All right, we've got a motion from Commissioner Tobias, and we have a second from Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Passes four-one with me being the, the negative. All right, thank you all so much for coming out, I do appreciate it. All right, we're gonna circle back to G's and golf, public comments.
Mr. Chair, we have, so far we have 10 for public comments on G, and another five under K for public comments.
What, what do y'all want to do? I mean, I, I'm happy to power through it or take a break.
I am so full.
Okay, I don't, I don't know if five minutes is really gonna work. Why don't we do 10? Because no one ever gets back in five. So we'll, we'll reconvene at about 11:13.
Do you want to switch?
It's, it's called...
Is that, would you rather?
It's called...
Yeah, let's, let's reconvene at, at 11:13. So we'll take 10.
Come sit over here, maybe you have air blowing on you.